Recording has begun.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to officially call this meeting to order. I will do roll call. Councilman Goldsmith.
Present.
Councilman Trolinger.
Here.
Councilman Jenkins.
Present.
And Mayor James are all here. If you all would please stand and join, please, in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, so the first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Council, have you all had the opportunity to look at the minutes? And if so, do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Goldsmith, Ward 1. I make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion, edits, anything like that? All right, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. So next on our agenda, we're going for petitions, communications, appearances, and public forum. I am going to pull one thing from the agenda. The person that we were going to present a certificate of recognition was unable to make it this evening. And it's so important, I think, for her to be here. So we will postpone that until the next time that she can be here because it is a fantastic story that I think that the public would really enjoy hearing. So we will go to the neighborhood grants. Do we have someone from Quailwood Town Homes present? Okay, and you know what? I will go next with you. Washington Square. All right. Come on down. That's great.
Thank you very much. Everyone's invited.
Fantastic. Thank you. You guys do know how to throw a party. Councilman Trolinger will present for King's Grant. There we go. Fantastic. We look forward to that. And is a representative from AgroCopia here? And what will they be doing?
Sure. So AgroCopia is going to be holding an AgroCopia block party. And so we are happy to present a $500 mini grant in the event that they are going to hold this block party. So we will present this to them after the meeting.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Bryant Ward for Steeplechase. Is a representative here for Steeplechase?
I'm here.
Well, there you go.
Neighborhoods' event mini grant recipient town presented to villages of Steeplechase in the amount of $500 for Steeplechase Spring Cleanup for the 2nd day of March 2022 in appreciation and recognition of your participation in the Town of LaPlata's Neighborhood Event Mini Grant Program. Your community spirit is appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Fantastic. Thank you. And I greatly appreciate the neighborhoods applying for these grants and just getting everyone out. And it's all about community. So thank you to those that apply. Next on our agenda is a proclamation for Maryland Day. Maryland Day, March 25, 2022. Whereas the distinguished and heralded tradition of Maryland began on March 25, 1634, as two small sailing vessels, the Ark and the Dove, approached southern Maryland shores and landed on St. Clement's Island, allowing settlers to disembark onto Maryland soil for the first time. And whereas since the arrival of Maryland's first pioneers, great Marylanders such as Thomas Stone, Francis Scott Key, Edgar Allan Poe, Harriet Tubman, and Matthew Henson stand as examples of the greatness inspired by the old-line state. Today, our state continues to prosper and build upon the ideals of Maryland's founders and pioneers. Whereas Maryland Day, March 25, is a day all Marylanders are encouraged to commemorate by participating in activities designed to celebrate our history and reflect upon vast and diverse offerings of the state. Now therefore, we, the council of the Town of LaPlata, do hereby proclaim March 25, 2022, as Maryland Day in the Town of LaPlata and encourage all of our citizens to join in celebrating Maryland's 388th anniversary. So we are excited about that. Make sure that you wear those flag socks or the shirts or whatever and be Maryland proud. So we wanted to recognize that. And there's one other recognition that is coming up, and that is Arbor Day. Arbor Day is April 6, 2022. Whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world and in Maryland on the first Wednesday of April. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, reducing heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property value, enhance the economic viability of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, we, the council of the Town of LaPlata, do hereby proclaim April 6, 2022, as Arbor Day in the Town of LaPlata and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day, to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of this and future generations. And it's signed by all council: Councilman Goldsmith, Councilman Trolinger, Councilwoman Bryant Ward, Councilman Jenkins, and myself, the mayor. And how we are recognizing Arbor Day this year is a little different. We have in the past planted a new tree. But because we have 20 beautiful Sweet Bay Magnolias that are lining our border on Wales Park, where we planted on 9/11 in commemoration and memory of the 20th anniversary of 9/11, they will be taking care of it. It'll be tree maintenance. So that's what we will be doing on Patriot Day. So if you want to swing on by on April 6 and see our Sweet Bay Magnolias over there, we will be working on them. All right, brings us to our monthly reports. The chief has his first up. Does anybody have any questions for the chief?
I'd like to have the chief, if he could, for the citizens of the town to highlight the three activities that took place this past week with your officers and you gave letters of commendations to. Pretty active for a small town of LaPlata. So if you have the time, would you please educate us? You should be good at that.
The first incident, one of our officers made a car stop. Charles Street and Crane Highway. The owner of... Asked for another officer to come, and they asked the two occupants to leave the vehicle. One of the occupants tried to pass, push through the officer. They detained him and they found that he had a loaded polymer 80 handgun in his waistband. So polymer guns, those type of guns that have no serial numbers you order and you put them together, or somebody puts them together, 40, they're tied to a lot of crimes in the region. The second one, I've lost my memory now. Help the council.
You expect me to remember, do you?
No problem. My phone doesn't pick up. The second commendation. Officer Warren was on that. It was him and Brian Smith on the handgun.
And then Madison, Officer Madison. And then, of course, IHOP.
IHOP, yes. So our officers responded to a call for an individual assaulting another individual inside the International House of Pancakes. When they arrived, the suspect had fled the area. A broadcast had been given for the suspect. One of the officers was doing area checks, saw the suspect inside or just outside the Lowe's. He got out to engage the individual and a foot pursuit broke out. Reading the report and looking at the video, it's something that you would take out of a Hollywood script through the store with items being thrown at the officer, pushed over to try to block their way. The individual knocked over a table of cookies where the Girl Scouts were. The officer was able to close in, tackle the individual, and put him in handcuffs. There was a struggle after the individual was tackled. What we do know is that probably would have been a homicide had the chief been removed from the knife. But it was clear, but looking at the video when this individual walked in, he had a purpose, and that purpose was to do great bodily harm to another human being. So our officers located it, pursued, made the arrest. And the teamwork between our agency, Charles County Sheriff's Office, and the Maryland State Police, they emptied out sectors to help us apprehend these people. And it was just a coordinated effort. I was actually in church when the phone went off. And I stepped out and they told me what was going on. But I had a letter heading over to Sheriff Barry, thanking him for his response, and over to Lieutenant West at the Barrett. It's very unusual for a desk officer at the State Police to get up and leave. The desk officer got up and left because of the magnitude of the crime that had just occurred.
It was the third one, the...
Soon to be my eight. Yeah, okay, so we had a, thanks. We had cat burglar. Cat burglars, by what they do is extremely dangerous. They break into people's houses at night when they're occupied. We don't have a lot of those. In fact, I think this is the first one in my tenure here. We had them in Greenbelt from time to time. Got a call for a cat burglar. Individual entered the house through the rear door. He was immediately engaged by the occupants who just happened to be up watching TV. The individual decided to leave. He fled out the front door. A description was given. Our officers, as they got into the area, slowed, saw the individual, were able to take him into custody, and take a cat burglar off the street. I can tell you from my previous experience, when you have a cat burglar in the community and you have multiple crimes, you will have a community on edge because you are so vulnerable for somebody breaking into your house in the middle of the night. So I'm thankful that our guys were alert coming in. You know, usually you get tunnel vision and you get there as fast as you can. They slowed as they went in. They looked for the individual and they apprehended him. So it was some really good police work last month.
I concur. Good police work. I'm really impressed by you, your troopers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, absolutely. Well, the most important thing to me, and it's going to happen in the next three days, if we have our COLIA. We have been preparing for this. We've prepared for it for four years. As you know, in hospital accreditation, it's a never-ending process. So Monday and Tuesday of next week, it's a virtual assessment. I don't particularly care for that. I'd much rather have the team here on the grounds. But that's the way it is right now. They will be conducting interviews with our folks. Their four areas are focused at the... Our compliance coordinator and the team leader from COLIA have selected. It is body cams. We were the first in Charles County to have body cameras. It's recruitment selection, which every agency in the nation is struggling with right now. It's community engagement, and it is community partnerships. So within that area is a focus. We have interviews set up. They will also be speaking with some elected officials, some of our community partners outside of those four areas. Most importantly, on Monday night, there will be a virtual hearing. The press releases up on our webpage. It's also on our Facebook page. And there's also a public call session. So if somebody doesn't want to appear virtually, they can call in anonymously, say anything that they have to say about our agency that are bad. So that press release is out. We have an upcoming event in Steeplechase for Coffee with a Cop. So that is one of the events that's going on. I'll be serving as a panelist for a human trafficking event that's going on Saturday. I know we have some experts coming in. I'm certainly not an expert in human trafficking. But I can certainly talk about how victimization occurs, especially amongst juveniles. And we've seen some of that here with some of our missing juveniles being baited by adults online to come meet them. Fortunately, all of ours have had good outcomes, but not all of them had good outcomes. Trying to think, we got... We're always busy. Those are the three that pop in my head immediately.
Thank you. Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you. Thank you, chief. Thank you, Councilmember Goldsmith, for bringing that up about the letter of commendation. That's great. And also the public events. Thank you. That's really good. I just had two questions, chief. On page two of your slides, there's a notation about the increase in calls. Is there any sense of why about that increase over historic levels?
Things that we're seeing now is what we've seen through COVID is mental health calls.
Okay.
Not all the time are we taking somebody to the hospital, but we're going on mental health calls. We're going on domestics because of the stresses that have come along with the economy in COVID. Usually, the past few years, even pre-COVID, July, August, December, and maybe October, we would hit 1,000 calls in one month. For us to hit it as many times as we've had in the past 12 months, it's just historic for us. And one of the things I know is a sponge can only hold so much water. So sometimes I'm asked why I rest her down. Well, when the officers are going, calling, calling, making decisions, is this petty theft worth taking me off the street for the next two, three hours or whatnot? So yeah, it's historic levels for us. We really know that, that is all. But we're not the only ones. It's a regional one.
And then just one further question if I might. Page four, or slide four, when you're talking about traffic stops. I probably asked this before, but so bear with me. Do those include traffic stops for like speeding or?
It does. It's all inclusive.
Okay.
Regular stops and reckless driving, suspected DUI, whatever.
Because I'd probably be being a dead horse about speeding. And I'll just relay one incident today. Walking at 2 o'clock in the afternoon in Clark's Run, about half a block away, somebody decides to blow through a stop sign at about 45 miles an hour. So I was just curious about the... And I know you guys are stretched thin and there's a lot going on, but it... And I did, I just was curious about, you don't have to answer it now. We can talk offline. But about perhaps having more visibility at times that changed people's behavior because it's...
Well, you know, there's...
And you and I talk about it a lot, so.
It's not only enforcement, it's engineering.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. Yep. Yes, sir.
Traffic. But I know the patrol commander sent something out asking them to be in the neighborhoods as much as possible. I know because I got a complaint about somebody who got a speeding ticket. And I will say, when I go to HLA meetings, and I know, I can't tell you how many times the mayor has stood beside me when I go, I go to an HLA meeting just in Steeplechase. Number one complaint I get is people are speeding in my community. And the number two complaint I get is I got a ticket. We want it for people from outside, not from inside.
Okay.
Just not the way it all works.
Thank you again. And again, the community engagement is terrific. Thank you.
Chief, one other question. I noticed on Washington Avenue this past couple of weeks, a lot of sheriff's departments out there doing traffic control, if you want to call it that. Is there a special thing going on?
There's just some assignments that have been going on. The sheriff's department's been working with it.
And one last question. I know you all did the Shamrock.
We did.
You supported that. I want to know if Officer Bradley ran in full uniform.
He did not. Officer Bradley was actually on assignment up at the Training Commission where he became a certified instructor. So we gave him grace that day.
Okay, so...
Plus it was cold. I don't know what else.
But thank you for that. That was very good. Thank you. Thank you, chief. All right, Director Harrington's report. If you all have had an opportunity to look at that, do you have any questions or comments?
Do, Madam Mayor.
Councilman Jenkins, go ahead.
If I can find my notes, bear with me. I'm just curious, are there regulations that govern how many... If there's a subdivision, residential subdivision that has X amount of units, is there any fire department regulations that say you have to have two access points over a certain amount of dwelling units?
No, I don't have the answer to that as far as fire department goes. As I tell you, the town code, we are deferring to Charles County standard specifications and details. So we would be looking at their roadway designs. In our comprehensive plan, we do state that we like interpersonal connections where possible. And when we do look at a subdivision, we do want two means of ingress and egress. So that's a standard one for our reviews.
And then, any issues that you've come across with respect to the weekly meetings or the bi-weekly meetings with Heritage Green in terms of their ongoing work?
Yeah, there hasn't been any issues, any concerns that have been brought forward by the public or by council or staff has been addressed very quickly. Their representative with the Department has given us his direct contact information. So anytime we have an issue, I'll forward that to him, and I usually...
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? I do want to commend you on a recent incident that could have really blown up the way that you handled one of our residents about educating them in the process of permitting and all that. And I commend you for that. You did an awesome job, and it was handled very well. So thank you for that. All right. Director Stahl, if you all have seen his report, does anybody have any questions for Director Stahl? Go ahead.
Thank you. Councilman Jenkins, Ward 4. Page 5, we talk about the water meters. So, and it seemed like we've made some pretty good progress finally, but we're still not quite there.
Last one where I saw those first. That'd be way down. The percentage creates has considerably gone up there. We're reprogramming at this point. So I do believe, you know, it is very positive. People have been responding. And so I think that we will, in time, be able to complete it. It will come down to probably having to shut some water off to get people to finally comply. But you have to understand, too, that a lot of these that are left are vacant homes.
Okay, that was, yes. Yep. Yeah, because I, there were some folks that I, that were in the loop at Hickory Ridge. And I know some, that people had moved, and I know there's some things going on there. Yeah. I get, okay.
There have been some, you know, we have been able to get in touch with the owners and be able to get into some vacant homes, but that's...
Okay. Yeah, I didn't realize that until somebody told me that.
It's going to come down to, there will be probably, you know, a certain number, less than 15. For any number of reasons, they will just ignore the situation, won't walk you in their house. Things that were...
Right.
...indefensible conspiracies, some sort of...
Thank you. And then I... Right. So I applaud you guys and the staff for having that diligence. So thank you. And then I just want, like, it's final observation or question. Water Smart, I know it's been pushed back to the kind of end of April. Is that because there's some technical issues or they don't communicate well? Or is the data exchange or?
Kevin's been very busy. I've been working on getting some data over. So there are some things. The rollout is coming up. And it is something where the finance department does interact a lot more because of...
Yep.
Yeah, I can speak to that, Councilman.
Okay.
Well, if you want me to run my reports up or if you want us...
If you want to, you want to do. Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Give him something to speak about.
Thank you.
Anybody else for Director Stahl? Thank you so much. All right, Mr. Greenville.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I apologize for not having my treasurer's report ready. I've just been extremely busy, and I have hired an accounting manager. So we will get those caught up to date, and I'll send those out and include them in next month's agenda. So I do apologize for that. Councilman Jenkins, in regards to Water Smart. We are, implementation has gone well. They're getting our daily information transmitted to them, so we're good there. We're going through quality control right now, mainly with the websites. Another thing that sort of was thrown in is scheduling training. So we have that now scheduled in the middle of April. Our go-live date is April 25. So that is just the delay of a few weeks. And we also have internal discussions. We didn't want to go live with it right when we're getting out water bills as well, which we're going to be getting those out the first week of April. So we are going to get customer letters out to all residents in April as well with that. So that is a few weeks delay on that, but it is going smoothly.
Well, thanks for that clarification because I, because I wasn't aware. And that's great that you illustrated that for us about the training. So thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Greenville? All right. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to our public comment. If anyone, either here or online, would like to speak, we ask that you state your name, your address, whether you live within the incorporated town limits. And if you could keep your comments to three minutes, that would be greatly appreciated. Do I have anyone who would like to speak this evening? Okay, hearing none, we'll go on to legislation. First one on the agenda is Villages of Rosewick Annexation for introduction.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Town Council. Resolution of Rosewick for introduction. Resolution concerning Villages of Rosewick Annexation for the purpose of authorizing the annexation of 20.7256 acres more or less of land into the corporate limits of the Town of LaPlata by amending the corporate limits of the town, establishing certain terms, conditions, and circumstances applicable to such land and to the owners thereof, providing for the zoning of such land upon annexation in all matters related to the annexation of such 20.7256 acres of land more. in all matters related to the annexation of such 20.7256 acres of land more or less into the town of La Plata.
Thank you for that. Council, do we have any questions on this agenda item?
No.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Jenkins, Ward four. So these are both being introduced as potential legislation and there will be public hearings scheduled for this annexation, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That brings us to the next one, which is 4.2 Villages of Rosewick Annexation Plan for Introduction.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Town Council Resolution Concerning Villages of Rosewick Annexation Plan for the Purpose of Approving the Annexation Plan for the Annexation of 20.7256 acres more or less of land into the corporate limits of the town of La Plata in all matters relating to a plan for annexation of such 20.7256 acres of land more or less into the town of La Plata.
Council, do we have any questions on the agenda item? Okay. That will bring us to our next agenda item, which is the Emergency Ordinance 22-05 Amendment to the Town of La Plata FY 2022 Financial Plan Budget for Introduction and Consideration of Adoption.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Town Council Emergency Ordinance Concerning Amendment to the Town of La Plata Fiscal Year 2022 Financial Plan Budget for the Purpose of Amending the Town of La Plata Fiscal Year 2022 Financial Plan Budget in all matters relating, generally relating thereto.
Do I have, I trust that everyone has seen that. If so desired, is there a motion to adopt Emergency Ordinance 22-05?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to adopt Emergency Ordinance 22-05 Amendment to the Town of La Plata Fiscal Year 2022 Financial Plan Budget.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? We're having problems with mics. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor, again, Councilman Jenkins from Ward four. As we discussed at the business meeting, this is just adopting the funds per se, but we're not, this does not specify yet specific grant recipients or where the money goes per se, right? Is that?
That is correct.
I understand, okay. And then again, it's my understanding that this is, in essence, a, a, a living, breathing document subject to change as conditions change or as we move through the fiscal year, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or open for discussion? Okay, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to the next one, which is Resolution 22-07, which is the Pump Station Wet Well Cleaning for Consideration of Adoption.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Town Council Resolution Concerning Pump Station Wet Well Cleaning for the Purpose of Authorizing the Town Manager to Enter Into a Contract Agreement for the Cleaning of Accumulated Fats, Oils, and Grease from Pump Station Wet Wells and the Hauling and Disposal of Set Accumulation in All Matters Related Thereto.
Do I have a motion to accept Resolution 22-07 as presented?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to accept Resolution 22-07.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Which brings us to Resolution 22-08 Operations Crane Maintenance Truck Purchase for Consideration of Adoption.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Town Council Resolution Concerning Operations Crane Maintenance Truck Purchase for the Purpose of Authorizing the Town Manager to Enter Into a Contract Purchase Agreement for the Purchase of a Crane Maintenance Truck.
Do I have a motion to accept Resolution 22-08?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to accept Resolution 22-08.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And it brings us down to our last one, Resolution 22-09 Operations Used Medium-Sized Excavator Purchase for Consideration of Adoption.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Town Council Resolution Concerning Operations Used Medium-Sized Excavator Purchase for the Purpose of Authorizing the Town Manager to Enter Into a Contract Purchase Agreement for the Purchase of a Used Medium-Sized Excavator.
Do I have a motion to accept Resolution 22-09 as presented?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to accept Resolution 22-09 Operations Used Medium-Sized Excavator Purchase.
Do I have a second?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Any discussion?
I would like to make one comment. Thank you for Bobby for doing your due diligence and really researching this. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to our new business, Commission Report. Councilman Goldsmith.
Yes, this is our new board met this month. Really kind of a light schedule overall. They talked about the La Plata Library, the new memo and the location and such. Our biggest issue, I guess, was Magnolia Gardens, the new construction, the plans and application for the site plan and such. The thing I was really pleased with, in their presentation, they indicated heavy-duty vinyl, which we had talked about before, and I was pleased that they did that and they went to the extra expense of it.
Fantastic. Thank you. Councilman Trolinger?
No report.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward. Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Parks and Recreation Commission met virtually on March the 9th, had a pretty, pretty big agenda. We had speakers and representatives from the Keep La Plata Beautiful Committee that talked about looking at a bike rack at, at Will's Memorial Park, discussion of a Bird City Pocket Park in, in the town as well, from Shannon Wang, who's the arts work group sub-chair, our chairperson. Then had a discussion about the ARPA funding for Will's Memorial Park for some improvements there, again, from the La Plata Beautiful Program. And again, there was some additional discussion about coordination with the county because they have purchased the adjacent property, in this case, to the north of the site, and it's going to be some kind of a county park. And they're working on what that might be, but it, right now, they've labeled it as La Plata Farm Park. So, so it'd be, to the committee would be a great opportunity for coordination, not only programs, but have access by trails and door parking. So there, that was a good discussion. We approved the memorial bench at Tillman Lake previously. Then we got some information and numbers about rentals at Will's Park throughout the last two years, in terms of numbers. And the thanks to Mr. Stahl and his staff, they'll be going back to Will's Park and do some touch-up painting of the building and some other improvements at the building itself. Also talked about some, and I think Mr. Stahl's talked about it earlier, improvements they're working on at Redwood Lake, removing some of the plants and replanting those and then regrading and then do some seeding, and then some additional planting and complete the walking path. That's what, that was unfortunately was probably removed during the reconstruction of the lake. And then also at Silver Linden Park, working on some trees and brush up, clean up there as well as Tillman Lake. And then we're going to go back and look at the, again, the Park and Recreational Master Plan to see what other kind of funding might be available for in the capital budget. And then we had a discussion about perhaps getting a greater coordination and partnering with Maryland, Maryland Department of Transportation does Walk October, every October. So we're, we're going to pursue doing a partnership with them to promote that throughout the year in terms of a healthy La Plata walking and cycling and running. So we have some resources and well, some, some possibility of some partners with that. So that concludes the report. If there's any questions or comments, I'll be glad to answer those.
Sounds like you guys have been busy. All great things happening. Any comments, questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Upcoming events, as the chief mentioned, we do have the Kalia onsite interviews, which will be taking place on the 28th and 29th. We have Ice Cream with the Easter Bunny coming up on April 18th at 11:00 a.m. On April 28th, this is the 20th anniversary of the tornado. So we are going to be having an event here, and if you have not already submitted a short video, just a short video to kind of tell us where you were 20 years ago when the tornado came here, please do so. The submissions can be uploaded up until, I think Friday is the deadline, this Friday is. And we will be having Celebrate La Plata two days after our tornado commemoration. So that will be on the 30th of April. I have to do a shout out to Bobby and six of his team members there, his workers. They, on a Saturday, helped clear out Lions Camp Merrick, their road down there, and I cannot tell you how appreciative they were of that. They brought down, I don't even know the names of the, the different types of equipment we brought down, but there were grabbers and there were chippers and there were, they, they worked very, very hard. So thank you for that. And also, I've got to commend my council, especially Councilwoman Bryant Ward and Councilman Jenkins on community outreach. Councilman Jenkins has a podcast. If you have not listened to it, you're actually kind of good there. I mean, I, I'm impressed, so.
You're being too kind because it is definitely a work in progress.
But you know, it's a way to connect with the community. And Councilwoman Bryant Ward, as the chief said, this, Saturday, they're doing a forum on human trafficking, and she has two other ones. I'm going to put you on the spot. I'm going to let you say what they are. And the dates?
Thank you. So Saturday, it's March the 26th, it's Sex and Human Trafficking from 10:00 to 12:00 over at the A Kent Avenue Building to bring awareness to sex and human trafficking. We have over 200,000 children, American children, that are sex trafficked every year. And when you think about 200,000, that's a large number. And then I wanted to have a last chat. You hear community members complain and never know who to bring their complaints to. So we've assembled a panel of community experts, law enforcement, the school board, NAACP, and other community leaders to come and sit on a panel to hear the concerns from the residents. This is an opportunity to engage and communicate with the residents and get to understand what their concerns are. And then the third one is opioid addiction, bringing the awareness to the impact that opioid addiction has on not only the individual, but the family members and the communities around them. And so I felt that that was important, and Dr. Diana Abney will be the speaker for that. And so just wanting to bring awareness and, you know, bring information to the community that's important to them. So, thank you.
So if you are able to attend, please do. Very informative. And I do have to give a shout out. One of our regulars is not here this evening, and hopefully he'll be watching. Mr. Runfola has a milestone birthday on Monday, so I'd like to wish him a happy birthday. You know, he, we may not always see eye to eye, but I really appreciate him coming to the meetings and holding us accountable for everything that we do. So happy birthday, Mike. With that, I move to adjourn. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Have a great night.